Welcome, everyone. You welcome to say what we're going to do next. It's your show.
No, it's the second information. Welcome everybody to the second informational meeting. Some have not been here before. So we will begin at the beginning with Michelle Gray. We have the Planner for the Town of Red Hook who will do the presentation. So for those of us who've been here before, you'll have to listen again, but Michelle says she'll make it as interesting as possible. And so we would begin. It's an informational meeting and there's some cider and donuts and everybody can relax. And of course, ask questions as we go. But we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, please.
Do you want to introduce Victoria?
Oh, and Victoria Polidora was the attorney, one of the attorneys for the town. But you're not really making, if you want to make a presentation too?
I'm just here to take notes.
Okay. So we have the Planner and the Attorney. And the members of the Board will be here also. Jim will be a little bit late. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
On the United States of America. And in the Republic from which it stands. One nation under one God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hello, everyone. Looking around the audience, it looks like we've sort of rounded up the usual suspects here. How many people who live in the Town of Red Hook who are here have not been to one of the informational meetings where I've made a presentation? Okay, so everybody's heard the presentation before. I'm not sure, do you want me to run through it again? I'm not sure whether we should briefly, what I can say as an overview is that the Town of Red Hook is... Yes, Sue?
Michelle, because we're taking tonight, it would be good.
Okay, so I'll just, but I'm just going to make very brief remarks because the purpose of the meeting really is to hear from the public. So if you've been here before, you've heard what I've had to say, maybe on a number of occasions. But basically, what the town is doing is it is looking to update the provisions for historic preservation in the zoning law. Okay, for many, many years, the town has been interested in historic preservation, going at least as far back as 1990 with the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, which called for a design review for new development within and adjacent to historic resources in the town. And based on that recommendation, in 1993, the Town of Red Hook adopted a brand-new zoning law. It was brand-new in 93, we're still using it. It has been through a few amendments, but we're still using that zoning law. And that includes basically three different sections that concern historic preservation. One is the Environmental Protection Overlay District, which requires site plan review for any development of any kind, single-family home, fence, anything, site plan review by the Planning Board for any development within 500 feet of an identified historic resource. Now, that section also refers to a map. Those resources were supposed to be mapped, but a map was never adopted. So the Town, the Planning Board has never been able to implement that section of the zoning law because the map of those historic resources was never adopted. Currently, the town, what's been proposed to the town by the Task Force is actually to delete that section of the zoning law. They feel that it's been 25 years since the town has tried to identify what those resources should be. It's sort of just gotten bogged down. And meanwhile, we have very significant resources in the town. Structures and districts that are on the National Register, some of which have been afforded no protection. So the Task Force first concept was let's at least, let's begin by focusing on the really critical historic resources in the community and make sure that they have adequate protection. So those resources shown on this map, they are the three historic hamlets. The Hamlet of Berrytown and Annandale. Those two are currently within the National Historic Landmark District. And then the Hamlet of Upper Red Hook. Now, the Hamlet districts are currently have provisions that require Planning Board review for alterations, new construction, and demolitions. Okay, and the Planning Board, it's a very simple process. They're required to issue a certificate of appropriateness. So there's no site plan requirement, no special permit. It's not a very onerous process. An applicant will come in and say, "We're thinking of doing this." Usually show some photographs. If they have construction drawings, they'll show those. The Planning Board sends the project to the Design Review Committee. Chris Gilbert, who's here tonight, is the Chair of that committee. And they, that's, oh, it's also Michael Brown. And they are professionals in the field. They are historic preservationists, builders who work in historic preservation, landscape architects, architects, planners. So they are professionals who give professional opinion to the Planning Board regarding the appropriateness of the alteration or the demolition or the addition. And the Planning Board then issues a certificate of appropriateness if they find it is appropriate. So that's currently on the books. That's another thing that's currently on the books for these three historic hamlets. We also have in the Town of Red Hook a National Historic Landmark District, which is everything west of this red line, which as you can see sort of zigzags back and forth across 9G. Okay, and it's, we're not showing the district in the Village of Tivoli because we're only talking about the Town of Red Hook tonight. But there are also lands within the Village of Tivoli that are in this district. And as I've explained before, this is not only an historic district that's on the National Register, which means that it is of historic importance, significance to the history of our nation, but it is actually also a landmark district. Okay, so it was originally registered on the National Register as an historic district. And subsequently, that designation was elevated in 1990 to become a landmark district, which means that it is of the greatest importance to the history of our nation. That's this area west of here. But despite that fact, there is nothing on the books that prevents the demolition other than in the hamlets or new construction with this National Historic Landmark District, unless an application already has to come before the Planning Board. So if there's already an application for site plan review, somebody wants to use something requires a special permit, and those, and that comes before the Planning Board, the Planning Board reviews it against a list of community standards, some of which are to restore to the extent possible historic structures. But if it's just a demolition of a building, an historic building, or a new construction, say a single-family home, that doesn't require a Planning Board review, there is no Planning Board review. And this is something that people often misunderstand. They think, well, something's on the National Register of Historic Places, it must be protected. But in fact, it's recognized, its historic importance is recognized, but it's not in and of itself protected. And most communities will use designation of historic districts like this to create some provisions in their zoning law to protect that district. So the Town, the Village of Rhinebeck has historic district provisions for its National Register district. The Village of Cold Spring does, they have very good provisions down there. The many other, many other communities that have historic districts do. The Village of Tivoli has created an historic overlay district. They have, they have demolition provisions, so the Planning Board has to review proposed demolition there. Victoria Polidora wrote those provisions for the Village of Tivoli. And they also require review of new construction in that district as well, Planning Board review. They require site plan review of new construction in that district. The Village, the Town and Village of Rhinebeck also have demolition provisions. And the Town of Rhinebeck, in some of its districts, has quite strict requirements. For example, in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet District, they require both site plan and special permit for any development that's proposed, right down to fences and lighting fixtures and things like that. So some communities in our surrounding areas have relatively strict requirements. But in the Town of Red Hook, we actually have nothing to really prevent, I mean demolition in particular of these historic buildings and structures, of which there are 345, I think, contribute, of which 300 of the 345 structures in this district have been determined to be contributing structures. So they are contributing to the historic significance of this area of the town. We also have in the town a number of individually listed National Register properties. They're individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places, including Rokeby and Montgomery Place. They're actually sort of twice designated, if you will, because they're within the National Landmark District. And then outside this area, we have four other properties. St. Margaret's here, the Hendrick Martin House here, the Valkley Farm, which is the...
Hermann's.
Hermann's Farmhouse, I can never remember the name of that one. And then the barn, there's a barn on the Eddie Parker property over here, that's also individually listed. Now, with the exception of St. Margaret's, there's nothing that actually protects those individually listed properties. And I accept St. Margaret's because it has received state and federal funding for its restoration. So whenever the property receives state or federal funding, its covenant is placed on that property for a period of time to prevent alterations or demolition of the building that would impact its historic character. So that's the only one that, and it's for a period of time. It's not a permanent thing, it's for a period of time. The other one that's like that is the Washtepheister Hall up in Tivoli. Also receives state and federal funding for its restoration, so that also has a covenant. I think it's for 20-year period from when it was restored. So that's sort of what we have. And what we have, as I say, is there is an overlay district that overlays this entire National Historic Landmark District in the town. That's called the HL, Historic Landmark Overlay District. And that's what governs, that's the section of the zoning law that currently that has the standards that say that, you know, restoration should occur as much as possible, and stone walls should be rebuilt, and the landscape should be preserved, and so on. A lot of these landscapes were also designed by very significant American landscape architects. And then we have the Hamlet District provisions. And then for lands outside this area, we have this section called the, in the Environmental Protection Overlay District that is supposed to regulate everything within 500 feet of identified historic resource. But as I say, those, there were locally designated resources, okay? But they were never actually mapped, so that section of the zoning law has never been implemented. And really, the whole discussion, I think, of historic preservation over the years has gotten kind of bogged down in that issue. And so that's why the Task Force has recommended, you know, let's just do away with that section of the zoning law. You can come back at another time and revisit it if you think it's important. But at this point, we just keep seeing, as a community, we just keep seeming to spin our wheels on that issue. So let's delete it and focus instead on what are really the critical resources. And the Task Force has recommended to the Town Board that the really critical historic cultural resources in the Town of Red Hook are these National Register properties. The district itself, the individually listed properties, and then of course, the historic hamlets, which we already have provisions for. Okay, so when they reviewed this, the one glaring omission that they noticed, by the way, when they first started to work on this, what they were thinking they would do was to just create this as a single zoning district. Simplify it, just create a single, like an estate property zoning district or something. You can see from the zoning map that there are underlying the Historic Landmark Overlay zoning district, there are a number of other, a number of zoning districts that are not overlays, but are actually zoning districts. So we have the Waterfront Conservation District, which is the most restrictive district in the town. It's the most environmentally sensitive lands in the town. We have the Limited Development District, the Institutional District. There are some lands that are agricultural business, this darker green. And then we have the RD5 District, which is just a very small, small areas of RD5 that have already been basically developed out as five-acre lots. And in addition, of course, to the hamlets, okay? Now, the Village of Tivoli, as I suggested, we're not looking at because Tivoli, like Red Hook, has its own municipality, has its own zoning laws, so that's kind of blanked out on this map. So they were originally thinking, why don't we just create a single district? You know, we have all these characteristics here that are very similar. It's large estate properties, beautiful homes and so on on the river. But what they discovered in really looking at it is that there is a logic to the uses in these various districts, okay? So the Institutional District, which is primarily Bard and the, and the part of the Montgomery Place property and the UTS property, you know, allows for college campuses and that, what are you going to do? There's a college there, it's appropriate. But that may not be an appropriate use in some of the other zoning districts. So they realized pretty quickly that there is a benefit to having these separate underlying zoning districts because each of them has very different uses. However, there's also a benefit to trying to make as much consistency where you can as possible. So one of the things they've looked at is the WC District, for example, has a building potential of one dwelling unit per 10 acres. And so does the Ag Business District, okay? Now, the LD and the I Districts in the town's Comprehensive Plan are actually recommended to have that same building potential, one dwelling unit per 10 acres. So one of the things they've looked at is, you know, maybe that's an area where consistency would be appropriate by changing that building potential there. They've also, by the way, been looking at some of, they've also looked at some of the uses that are allowed in this area. Some of them they have recommended to the Town Board are really too, maybe too intensive for this area. For example, in some of these zoning districts, a hospital is allowed. And given the nature of river road and, you know, trying to get in with emergency vehicles, that may not really be the best use for some of these lands. Helport and private airstrips are also an allowed use. And there's, you know, there's sort of benefits and drawbacks to both. A lot, a lot of wealthy people would like to be able to land a helicopter on their property. On the other hand, it does have noise impacts, as we all know from listening to the governor fly up and down the river between Albany and Hudson. And these flights are fairly high, you know, high altitude, higher altitude. So they've suggested that those are permitted uses that maybe should be deleted. On the other hand, there are some uses in these districts, particularly in the LD and the I District, which are where there are, you know, old homes that could be adaptively reused, which are currently not allowed to have a lodging facility. So they've suggested that perhaps a lodging facility, and actually, Wendy Aldrich talked with a friend, I think it was in Vermont, wasn't it, Wendy?
Yeah.
Yeah, and where they have this kind of adaptive reuse of these older properties, older homes, up to like 25 rooms for sort of like an inn or a lodging facility. So they recommended that lodging in the LD and the I be an allowable use. So, let me see, is there anything? Oh, I see that Pete Hubble is here, and I know he's going to want to talk about agriculture. So I do want to say that in, and also Jim Ross also wanted us to talk about, because we've sent notifications to everybody who owns properties in these areas and these individual properties, but not to the town as a whole. And there are a couple of changes that would affect properties outside the ones identified on these maps. So I wanted to briefly address that tonight as well. Specifically...
Michelle, you might say in some detail the changes in getting a building permit or any work you're doing on a historic building.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I talked about that. So essentially, what they're proposing is that there are provisions for the hamlets where a certificate of appropriateness from the Planning Board is required, Planning Board review is required for any alterations, new construction, and demolition. What they're proposing is that be applied to the Hamlet Districts, the Historic Overlay District, and also any individual property that's, sort of property that's individually listed on the National Register. So that's what they're proposing, that that process of the certificate of appropriateness review process be applied to new construction, demolition, and alterations in these areas. It works, as I say, very well in the Hamlet District. In the 14 years that I've been working with the Planning Board, they've never once sent me an application to review for a certificate of appropriateness. It's a process that they can handle themselves. They don't need any kind of, you know, legal, or they haven't, so far, never needed any kind of legal or planning or engineering consulting on that. So it's a relatively simple process. I think it works very well. It's very quick. It usually just takes a couple of weeks. They're not required to have a public hearing. They can, but they are not required to. And so if a project is, you know, large, or if there seems to be concern from neighbors about a project, sometimes they will hold a public hearing to allow, you know, neighbors to comment on a project. But most often, they don't hold a hearing. So that's sort of the proposal, yes.
What would be the burden on the property owner, both time-wise and monetary-wise, for doing this application thing?
Right, so one of the things that they're proposing is that the current process be streamlined, so that an applicant would come to the Building Department, and the sketch information would be forwarded both to the Planning Board and to the Design Review Committee at the same time. Right now, the way it works is they come into the Planning Board, and then the Planning Board refers it to the Design Review Committee. So right off the bat, there's an extra two weeks there. So they're proposing that they both be referred out at the same time. And then for the next Planning Board meeting, the applicant appears before the Planning Board. If the Design Review Committee has determined that they believe the project is of a minor nature, and if the Planning Board agrees, then the process finishes right there and there's no fee.
Is there going to be like architect required to...
It's architectural review, yes.
No, I mean for the property owner.
Oh, no, they don't have to hire an architect, no.
If the contractor sketches something out?
Exactly, photographs of the property contractor sketch. You know, many people come in with architectural drawings because I think if your project is going to be more than $15,000 to construct, you require to have stamp plans. So people will often come in with them if they have them and show them. But it's not a requirement of the zoning law. And the fee is $50, okay? Now, if they come before the Board and they're, based on the recommendations of the Design Review Committee, the Planning Board determines that no additional review is required because it's a minor, minor application, then there's no fee. Well, at least the Task Force has proposed this to the Town Board, that there not be a fee in that case. The $50 fee is mainly required for administrative purposes and for, you know, notices of a public hearing if there is one. So in terms of things, you know, when you write a zoning law, when you amend a zoning law, I mean, you know, you create a new section, and then you have to change other sections of the zoning law to sort of fit it in. So in looking at the possibility of lodging facilities, for example, in, as a new use in the LD and the I District, we had to look at the various lodging provisions for lodging within the current zoning law. And there are two separate sections. One is hotels and motels, and one is inns. And when we looked at them, there was really not a huge amount of difference between those two, three uses, really, hotel and motel as two uses. So we've, the Task Force has proposed that those sections of the zoning law be combined into a single section called lodging. And so in doing that, they've looked at some of the existing provisions. You'll remember that the RD3 zoning district, which is this sort of lighter green color here, used to be everywhere, that's also now this dark green, right? That used to be the way the zoning map looked. And then when the Ag Business District was created, a lot of those RD3 lands, you know, were encompassed within the Ag Business District. So there's not as much RD3 left outside this area. And so one of the things they've been looking at is the possibility of deleting the use of, for lodging in that, in that area because it is a primarily residential area, and a lot of the bigger parcels are no longer in the district. They're now in the Ag Business District where lodging is allowed. I've asked Bob Wills in Dutchess County Planning if he would... There are certain restrictions, by the way. It's not just any, any property in the RD3 can have a hotel or an inn. There are certain restrictions. For example, the minimum lot size is five acres. So you have to have five acres, minimum lot size. In some cases, for, I think it's a hotel motel, you have to be on a state highway. And you have to have 300 feet of frontage on a state highway. For an inn, you have to have five acres of land and be on a state county or through road. But you're only allowed to do adaptive reuse, not new construction. So there are a number of conditions that restrict the number of properties even within the RD3 that could have, you know, a lodging facility. So I've asked Bob Wills if he could wave his GIS wand and produce a map for us that shows which properties would be eligible for a lodging facility, you know, under the current provisions, based on those conditions of minimum five acres, 300 feet of frontage on a state road, and so on. So that the Town Board can really see, you know, how much of an impact would it be? Maybe there's such a small number of properties that would be affected, it doesn't matter whether you keep the provision or not. But in any case, I know the Town Board would like to reach out to those landowners and see whether they have any comments on possibly deleting lodging as a permitted use in the RD3 District. So that's one thing that we're looking at. In terms of the Ag Business District, of course, what we do is a search of the zoning law. And every time it says hotel or inn, you know, we have to then replace that word with the word lodging because we're creating this different use. And one thing we noticed when we did that search is that the language with regards to lodging in the Agricultural Business District is not very clear. Okay, what it's currently says is, "An inn shall be..." This is for all districts. It says, "An inn shall be limited to 10 guestrooms, except in the AV District. An inn shall be limited to 16 guestrooms, as long as the inn has ingress to and egress from a state highway." So, I mean, you could read that to mean that you're only allowed to have an inn in the Ag Business District if you have egress and ingress from a state highway, which was not the original intent. The original intent was that you could have inn in the Ag Business District up to 10 guestrooms, unless you were on a state highway, in which case you could have it up to 16 guestrooms, okay? So that I don't think was clear in the original language, and we're proposing to revise it to say, "A lodging facility," and now we're using lodging rather than inn, "but a lodging facility shall be limited to a maximum of 10 guestrooms in the AV District, unless the access to the facility is provided from a state highway, in which case a lodging facility shall be limited to 16 guestrooms." And I think that's clear, and it more closely captures what the original intent of the zoning law was, you know, was originally, when we adopted the Ag Business District. So that's really just a clarification. There's one substantive change to the Ag Business District. Currently, a restaurant that is accessory to a farm market requires a special permit. Now, there are two farm markets, there's three farm markets allowed, one, two, and three, depending on size and so on in the town. Currently, for farm markets, one and two, you don't require a special permit, and you only require a minor site plan review. So it seemed onerous if somebody had a restaurant associated with a farm market to require, especially a farm market one or two, to require a special permit. So what we've suggested is that be amended so that a restaurant, so that the requirement for a special permit for restaurants accessory to a farm market would be deleted for a restaurant up to 20 seats, okay? So that for a small, like 20, because a lot of farm markets will have a couple of tables. They might even have a little bit of food service. And it didn't, it seemed onerous to require in a situation like that a special permit. So a larger restaurant associated with farm market, because of traffic and parking implications, would still require a special permit, but not a smaller restaurant. And the last, the last item, by the way, I have these on sheets. I have a handout if you'd like, but unfortunately, when I made a PDF of this document, it didn't include item three. So you have to make a note on this if you like. But the last one is that the cap of 16 guestroom... A cap of 16 guestrooms in the B1 District is proposed to be deleted. So, oops, those are for you here, sorry. Currently, in the B1 District, you are allowed eight guestrooms per acre with a maximum of 16. And since the B1 District, which is very small, it's located here, and it's located here, B1 District is the business district, it didn't really seem right to have a cap on the number of guestrooms. The number of guestrooms is going to be limited by the size of the district, the size of the parcels in the district, in any case. And even if somebody came, because a very small parcel in a very small district, so you're not going to have like a 10-acre parcel that can have, you know, 80 rooms. It just isn't a 10, a single 10-acre parcel. And even if someone did buy of all the properties in this district, by the way, it's bisected by a state highway, but even if they did, there are other things that limit the size of facilities, such as lot coverage, building coverage, requirements for parking, and so on. So we don't foresee that there's any difficulty with lifting that restriction. But that is something that would affect property owners in the B1 District, and so the Town Board may want to notify those people as well. I just reviewed, Jim, the concern that you had about properties outside of the historic area. This is the... Yeah, that's right. I was going through because I had...
So Michelle, when we talked in the many zoning public forums we had as we were reviewing the zoning, the area of Route 199 east of the village, I thought I just heard you say that you're proposing to change it.
Well, no, not really to change it. This is a B1 District, and this is, we're not proposing... The only change that's proposed is that currently there's a cap. You're only, if you have a lodging facility there, you're only permitted to have a maximum of 16 rooms. And what they're proposing is to just do away with the cap, okay? Because you're limited by other things. For example, you can only have eight guestrooms per acre. And the district itself and the properties themselves are actually very small. And there are other factors, like, you know, there's a limit on the amount of lot coverage... And there are other factors like, you know, there's a limit on the amount of lot cover you can have. You have to have certain amount of parking, you have to have septic and water and so on. So there are other things that limit the size of a lodging facility there. It doesn't seem necessary to have a 16-room cap, especially since it is the business district. And it kind of came up because what they're proposing for like the LD and the I is I think for adaptive reuse is a maximum of 25 rooms. So it didn't seem logical to allow up to 25 in some of these other districts and only allowing 16 in the B1 District. That seemed to be sort of...
And what is the zoning currently on the property that is known as Sky Park Airport?
I think that's RD3, isn't it?
Yeah, it's RD3.
Or is it AV? Oh, that's this one, yes, that's RD3.
That's RD3. Is there a change proposed?
No. The only change that is proposed is that currently a conference center, okay, which is allowed in some of the districts here and is also allowed in the light industrial district, which is a floating district. So you can't notify any property owner about that because it's floating. That could be landed, so to speak, though. I mean, the Town Board could, somebody could apply to create that Sky Park property as a light industrial property, to rezone it in effect, okay, to be light industrial.
And you're doing hotel motel.
We talked about that, yeah, in the RD3, I talked, just talked about that.
That applies to Sky Park.
Oh, yeah, actually, that would apply to Sky Park. I see what you're saying, that would apply to Sky Park. But what they had been considering as far as I'm concerned is more of a conference center, was it not?
Well, I think the options of the negotiations have been fairly fluid. And it was our intent, I believe, when we discussed the zoning, to maintain that for purposes of that...
For lodging.
For lodging and restaurant.
Well, that's why I had this map that I want Bob Wills to produce for us. Will be very important because we'll be able to look more carefully at exactly which properties are impacted and whether that's something you want to move ahead with or not. I think that's really important. The other way that it might be impacted is that with the, as we talked last time, with the conference center, that use, right now, there's a restriction on that use that states that the, any restaurant or lodging facility associated with a conference center can only be open to the participants of that conference, which is just, there's just no conference center that could really function with that restriction. So the task force again has proposed to you that that provision be deleted.
Okay. And if one were to take that conversation further and look along the river, is there any area in that historic riverfront, National Historic Landmark District, that would allow something like a Mohawk?
Yes, I mean, that would be a conference center, which is allowed in...
And it's allowed, where would it be?
I don't have everything memorized, I'm afraid.
No, that's all right. Are you sure you don't?
Let me just see, okay, conference center. Okay, is a special permitted use in the LD District, the I District, and then the light industrial, which is the floating district. So the LD and the I, and that's also, those are also the districts where they're proposing that you allow a lodging facility, yes, exactly those... Sorry, not in the LI, but in the LD and the institutional district. They're also suggesting that you allow a lodging facility, which would encourage, we hope, adaptive reuse of these very beautiful buildings. So the idea is to try to give some economic viability for those types of structures. So are there any comments that I leave? Oh, I have also a map, by the way, a hard copy of this map. If anybody doesn't have one or would love to have one, I can pass those around.
The same as the one that we had last week? Now, will the proposed changes that would impact agriculture be given to the Ag Committee for review?
I would hope that you would take them to the Ag Committee. Did you get a copy of that printout that I made?
The one page?
Yeah. I would hope that you would please take that to the Ag Committee and discuss it with them, Pete, and get back to us on what their comments are. I mean, the town can formally send it to you as well, maybe they want to...
I think that would probably be good, and I would take, but the town formally has requested to review it.
Well, I don't know, you have four town, five Town Board members here tonight. Maybe they can formally do that. But I think, I would certainly recommend that that be reviewed by your committee.
Pete, do you see this as adequate for transmission of this information?
I just haven't really had a chance to read it over, so I'm sure we have a lot of comments.
And your next meeting, Pete, what is the date?
I just meant, the other day, we don't meet till end of December.
Till December?
Yeah, we could meet earlier and have a special meeting. When are you due?
Okay, the Town Board will meet on November 10th.
For a program?
For a regular Town Board meeting. So we could refer to you as an agenda item that night.
Oh, that night, yeah, well, and when does the Town Board, when is he looking to move on this? Well, he won't on all this.
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so we got...
This is a work in progress. I can't answer that.
I don't have to call a meeting in the next three weeks to deal with it.
There are a lot of steps we have to go through, the secret process and...
We just want to keep the ball rolling, you know? And get all the questions out. I think, you know, all of us have experienced with various people who have felt frustrated with lengthy planning processes. And some of us, I particularly feel, I haven't done a very good job of addressing commercial development in Red Hook, defining a commercial area that would benefit everybody by broadening the tax base. And I think that's a challenge. And I think, you know, obviously, in my term, it won't be done, but...
But you did, well, I mean, you did increase the size of this...
Yes, we did.
And also you created this office industrial zone. So that is...
But what I haven't done, and we haven't done, is aggressively let people know, let it be known that that exists. And that's, you know, that's just something that we haven't wrestled with and we probably should, because I think it would make a...
To market it.
Have a very big impact on residential properties in terms of a tax relief, so...
Well, that's a little bit outside of...
Yes, of course it is.
Yeah, proposed right now. But I agree that I think, you know, you do have this office industrial area now, zoning district, actually. And it would be good if the town could find ways to actually market that, you know, to prospective businesses.
Now, for those properties, for those properties that are in the AV District, are we increasing the amount of acreage in the AV District at all?
No, no, there's no change. You're not actually adopting, you're not making any changes to the zoning map at all. There's no zoning map amendments at all. This is just a map that's, that this new section of the zoning law that's been proposed on historic preservation refers to the Historic Resources Map. And that's what this map is. And you remember, at the first meeting, I put up another map, which I think is downstairs now, that was the town's attempt in the 90s, I think it was, to identify historic resources. And you remember, it had 200 properties in this area that had been identified for protection. And then, and that was for the Environmental Protection Overlay District. So then, not only those properties, but anything within 200 feet of them would have required site plan review. And I think that's when things got kind of bogged down. So this is a step back, really, in trying to say, you know, what are the critical resources? And are they being adequately protected? And if not, what can we do to ensure there is some kind of review process? And let's try to make the review process as streamlined as possible, so it's as simple to go through. So like, as I say, Tivoli, for example, requires site plan review for new construction. And Rhineback requires site plan and special permit review. And they're just proposing to extend this process, which works well in the Hamlet District, which is just the Certificate of Appropriateness. So there's no need for anybody to hire a consultant to prepare an actual formal site plan. So that's a huge savings right there. Yes?
Michelle? Floating light industrial, how does it come to rest?
Well, an applicant would have to apply to the Town Board to rezone a property, essentially rezoning of a property. But the rezoning, the provisions for the new district are already included in the zoning law. Victoria can correct me if I'm not worried. But that's essentially it. They have to make an application to the Town Board. And usually, the Town Board will require that they do it in conjunction with a development project that they're proposing. You don't just get the rezoning and say later on, oh, what are we going to do? They have to come in and say, "We feel that this light industrial use would be appropriate for this property, like a conference center, for example. And so we have our plans, here are our plans, here's our site fund for the conference center, here's our special permit application." And now, and as part of that, they would also apply to the Town Board for a rezoning.
So it could happen in the AV District?
I'd have to look up whether it's allowed to land in that district. There, I'd have to look it up, I don't think it can.
It's more a use than a designated geographic area?
Well, no, actually, there is a section of the zoning law on light industry and it lists the zoning districts where it can land, so to speak. And I don't think the Ag Business District is one of them, but the RD3 is. The Ag Business District has its own industrial uses that are allowed. You know, there's...
Ag-related, business-related, manufacturing processing. Not just on the farm, but also, I think, we're allowed bringing produce in, tank products in from a non-produced on-site.
Right, exactly.
There's one other element that I mentioned in the Certificate of Appropriateness. That doesn't mean that everything has to be colonial from a colonial period. It allows Fisher Center kind of building in the future. The creativity of architecture to move forward.
And that's actually consistent with the town's local revitalization, local waterfront revitalization program, also has language to make that. Yes, wait, did you have a call?
I'd just like to say how lucky we are in Red Hook to have Michelle Gray. The continuity, the continuity, the grasp of this, and of course, she's been living with it for a long time. But just as your town is story, I'm so pleased that we are in the process of making this move that there's a respectful treatment of historic resources, where before it wasn't very efficient and it wasn't, in fact, able to be delivered in the same way. Now I can see it will be. But just looking back over the long years of not just in historic preservation concerns, but environmental protection generally and where the town has come in the last generation or two, it is just dramatic good news for the people today and tomorrow of this town. And hats off to not just Michelle, but the Intermusical Task Force and the Town Board and the Planning Board and the larger community that has responded to questionnaires and everything. I mean, this is the right way to go. But each step is a careful, prudent one and checking back with the people's concerns and everything. It's just pretty exciting stuff. Now, I'll just end with one question. If in the town, outside the villages and outside the National Historic Landmark District, there are properties that become listed on the National Register in the future, do they automatically fall into this category or do you have to go through some kind of a town process?
They would automatically fall into the category. If they are eligible or deemed eligible to be listed on the National Register, they would fall within the provisions of this zoning law. But this map would then, should then be amended just to show that.
Sure. It's something that others need to be aware of. And we're all in the business from time to time of promoting that kind of recognition and listing and documentation. Because we have always said in the past, there is no limitation whatsoever on what you do with your property if it goes on the National Register. It's just a recognition. It helps to protect it from bad things that the federal or state or county government might do in the way of putting through a prover leaf of a highway or something. But as you, the property owner, you're not restricted. But now, in this town, we will be. And we'll just say that it's wise people are running the program and the town of Red Hook and so it's going to be handled in a respectful and informative way. But it no longer is true that there will be no operation of the police power of the town with respect to that private property. We just need to...
I think it sounds much scarier than it actually is, but I understand. But there is also a provision in the local law that if the town in the future were to designate any locally significant properties, that that would also fall under the jurisdiction of this section of the zoning law. But again, this map in that case would have to be amended, would be required to be amended because, you know, you can't, it's one thing to say, well, this is a property on the National Register, you can look it up. But, you know, the Planning Board can't implement something if they don't know whether a property's been locally designated or not. And I really would recommend that the town work with the Historic Red Hook to, who we have some representatives from here, to have the hat, to develop like a process for designating such local properties. It shouldn't just be an arbitrary thing, it should be really grounds for such a designation, you know, the age of the building, the architecture of the building and so on. You know, is it associated with an historic person? Yeah, same to you, yes.
So we currently do not have a list of historic structures, historic assets in the town.
Oh, no, we have many lists of historic assets.
Well, if it were one, that would be the one to go to to...
To begin that, yeah, we do have, we have a number of different inventories. It's actually something that I know, maybe Claudine could speak about it. She's working on this now.
Yeah, we have notebooks. And this is the way they did surveys back in the 90s. They make, fill out lots of survey sheets and put them in notebooks. Some of those are available online through Dutchess County Parcel Access, but not all of them. And at this point, rather than making those that aren't available, for instance, those in the landmark district digitally, online, I think it makes more sense, and I think Warren Temple Smith agrees, to actually resurvey and at the same time do it with up-to-date technology so anybody can see going online what those, all the information that's been collected about the structures. So we are going to try to launch that process, it's a long process. But as you said last, the last meeting, I think, you know, you could take another six or seven years, you know, to try to update. And then by that point, you know, then it's out of date, you know.
Yeah, it's like painting a bridge. But so, I mean, so really, yeah, there was, of course, there was a survey that was done for the National Landmark District designation of that whole area. But then outside that, there have been at least one, if not two. I think there've been two, haven't there, surveys of properties outside of that? One of them was referred to in the original zoning law. We think that the one that it was referred to was this one, which is 36 properties that were identified from the town-wide survey outside the National Historic Landmark District that had been recommended for protection. These were what were supposed to be mapped, around which 500, 500 feet of which was supposed to be reviewed. Okay, these were the problems. But of course, since that time, some of the houses have burned down, unfortunately. And we did ask Historic Red Hook to figure out the condition of all these existing ones. And part of the difficulty is that this, these properties, there's no property ID number given and they were, the survey was done prior to the 911 addresses. So the addresses don't match up with what's out in the field today. There's a few things to make it challenging.
And a lot of the section, the parcels have been rezoned. So what was a parcel then was now...
Not a parcel.
Right, not a parcel.
It's been subdivided.
Claudine, the updating will not be limited chronologically the way the earlier ones. I think that was, there's a cutoff of 1850. I hope that we get into the 20th century.
Absolutely, absolutely. The criteria has to be brought to the table as well.
Well, imagine by the 22nd century. Well, imagine by the 22nd century, what rock people look like. Think about it. The grandchildren and all...
This'll be a historic building.
All the people, yeah. I think so.
Are there any other questions or comments, Robert?
You know, just, Michelle, I wanted to, to make sure that folks were clear on the process only applies with regard to alterations when it's been determined a significant change to the building is occurring. If they are repairing or redoing this siding with similar materials and so on and so forth, this process doesn't apply. They're not even put in front of the design review committee.
Yeah, that's correct. And it doesn't apply to painting buildings, the colors of buildings. Did I miss anything in the presentation? Try to be as thorough as I can.
So what are the next steps and what, you know, ahead?
Well, the next steps are for the board. I think we have to finalize some of these issues, like, you know, lodging facilities in the RD3. I think that's a really critical question. There's a few, you know, changes I would like, a couple of minor amendments I'd like to discuss. But after that, once, once the board is satisfied that they have a local law that they want to move forward with, the next step would be to do seeker, would have to go to Dutchess County for review. Now, I do have a copy of it for, the town board asked me to prepare a copy of the local law with the map and so on to send down to an, for an initial review to the county. And we have that ready to go. So we can get some initial, I think it's nice to get initial comments from them before you set a public hearing. So if there's anything else we want to revise, we can do it before the public hearing is set. Seeker public hearing, LWRP determination, because it is in the local waterfront revitalization area.
Planting Board referral.
Planting Board referral, right. So that's just the sort of procedural things we have to go through.
Another question on the historical properties. I have an 1800 house. So if I wanted to paint it or replace the roof with a, I have a tin roof and I want to put a shingle roof on, it's not going to impact my ability to do what I want to do on the outside of my house?
If the roof materials were changed, that would require a review.
If the roof what?
Materials were changed. But painting it, no.
Would require if I decided my old tin roof's no good and I want to put shingles up, asphalt shingles?
Yeah, you'd have to come to the board for that one.
I agree.
They could give a fairly complete list in, in the zoning, and a fairly complete list of the things you would need, certificate of appropriateness for.
Is that the quote right there?
Yeah.
But you do now, Pete.
Are you in the hamlet?
You do now.
Do now what?
You're in the hamlet, Pete, right?
Yes.
So you have to do that now in any case, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I didn't know whether they could tell me what I had to do. I might have to...
Any alterations?
Well, they, they can't tell you, I mean...
So they can't tell you what you have to do.
There's nothing in the law that says that you can't put the asphalt shingles on. It just says that they'll review it. And then our design review committee could probably tell you what they would potentially say, but, you know, they'd go over it with you.
Yeah, it's very similar to the committee you chair now, your advisory. And so in this case, there'd be...
We just advise everybody, nor is what we do anyway.
Well, you'll have to take that up with others on that. But this, this is a committee that essentially is functioning and has been functioning for years. And I think the hope is that they might actually be an asset to homeowners, because there's a lot of experience there and they might be able to suggest materials that you and I haven't thought of, certainly I haven't thought of, because I don't have experience in what there is, so...
I, I did think of one other thing when you were speaking, which is that currently in the zoning law, you have these two separate committees. You have the design review committee, and then you have the hamlet buildings review committee, I think they're called, right? Well, we only in effect have one committee. It's all the same people serving on the chief's every committee. So one thing we've suggested is just to make it a single design review committee, but to require that one member of that committee live in one of the hamlets. Because currently, the hamlet review committee requires that at least one person live in one of the hamlets. So we propose to sort of carry that forward, so you have a hamlet person on that committee. As well, as long as, along with the town historic ex officium non-voting member. Chris?
I think you guys have done an amazing job of suggesting how to have more oversight with actually less government. So there's actually less governmental sort of bother with the, with the suggestions that you've made. But you also get, you've expanded your oversight a little bit. I think it's very smart and clever of whoever's behind it.
That's dependent on having a very capable committee.
Yeah.
And that's a message about you as the chair, Jeff among the others, as we consider the experts.
Well, I mean, just believe that you guys...
The people who are best in a position to make that decision have the skill.
The way that you guys have looked forward to it, I think is really quite clever. And it's not what you sometimes find in committee, you know, committee work. It gets more complicated. In fact, you've made it less complicated.
Yeah, that was the goal.
So I think that's great.
Well, I know that people are concerned about how long it sometimes takes to get up, you know, a zoning amendment prepared and so on. But in the case of the town of Red Hook, it comes from many, many, many conversations. And despite how well everybody seems to get along, they have many different opinions and don't always agree with each other. So, but I think that hashing out, constantly hashing it out, what about this, what about that, is what really makes the work good and achieves that balance that you're talking about.
Michelle, you say that there needs to be a resident of each hamlet?
No, just of a, of the hamlet district.
I was going to say, there are not very many living in Annandale, right?
No, just from one of the three hamlets. There also has to be somebody, you know, with a professional design expertise, you know, interested in experience in historic preservation. So there are certain requirements for the people who serve on the committee. And we're very lucky to have very good people in the town who are serving a lot. Oh, also, I did ask Chris Kane about your question about a liaison with the planning board, and she's very amenable to having a liaison from the committee come to the meetings. And we also talked about the possibility, since the planning board is short to alternates, you know, perhaps there's a member of the committee who would be interested in serving as an alternate to the planning board, so...
It's very interesting. I mean, are you in line? Sure.
It's two jobs in one, though.
Are there any other comments or questions? Well, so...
Thank you very much.
I know some people want to go for dinner, shall we call it a night? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Michelle.
Great job.
Thank you all.